This conference will now be recorded.
And then also the idea that there's multiple approved PUDs that might have some very small changes as they go forward into being built. So, multiple councilors kind of felt like it was a little bit of a kind of technical hole in what we provided them. I did tell them that we were working on other PUD types actively. An idea of kind of a bridge, like kind of a generic PUD type that could apply in the hole, the area where we don't have any between now and when we have ours perfect was an idea that they kind of threw out there is making them more comfortable with everything else in the draft. So, I guess what my request would be that just as we're talking about the infill redevelopment district PUD, we might kind of keep a broader idea in mind of how something like that might kind of address those counselor comments. I don't know. Does that make sense from what you heard, Paul, as well?
I think that's a good intro and we can talk about it more.
Yeah, so I guess if people agree, we could maybe expand that discussion that's already on the agenda. Seeing general nods. We can talk about it then, I guess. No, I'm not talking, I'm only talking about the PUD, the missing PUD.
Counselor Cutter say that he's quite keen on the MCD.
Well, I think different councilors, okay, I guess the other part of the update is that different councilors had different things that they weren't interested in with the draft, but we weren't asked or tasked specifically with kind of reviewing or coming back with anything. Some ideas were tossed out there, but we weren't asked to respond to anything specifically. And different councilors had different ideas and expressed their opinions. Generally, from what I was hearing last night, it seems like at least three of the councilors are quite happy with what we've provided. And other than this PUD idea, there didn't seem to be a specific thing that we were being asked to look at or come back with.
So Jessica, just in general, is the plan that the city council will receive all the comments and discuss it among themselves and then come back to us with specific direction as to what they like and what they would like us to tweak?
So, yes, and a lot of that discussion happened last night and we weren't asked to discuss or tweak anything except they were very interested in the idea of if there was some kind of tool or PUD type that could kind of bridge the gap between now where there is a PUD type and our draft, which didn't have one for a lot of this. So that was the one thing that kind of came out of that discussion. They do have a second hearing February 7th, so there could be additional discussion after that.
Can I add to that, that what I took from the conversation was that the majority of the councilors seemed inclined to want to move forward with the draft and if there were issues, take them up as a second step. It seemed like that was more their interest.
Yep, so they may, you know, if there's some technical things that come out of comments, you know, it seemed like there wasn't a lot of interest with holding up the whole thing now.
One of the councilors offered a list of 22 items that, but the majority seemed to say later.
The majority specifically voted to say that we were not supposed to take up the 22 items. That was like a specific direction.
Although they might ask us to do so after.
Yeah.
I mean, I would be more than delighted if what was, the sense I got last night that let's get this lot approved as we've submitted it. And in our new session, which starts tonight, then maybe they could ask us to make changes or not.
Okay, so I think that's a food overview.
But they'll vote on the 7th of February.
Yes, the plan is it'll be, they'll get more comments and have it warned to have a potential vote.
I'm not doing commissioner announcements right now.
We, so I have skipped the open to the public for items not related to the agenda. Do we have any public items?
Do we have any?
Okay, there are some public ones. And then I guess we can move into announcements if anyone has else had any other announcements.
I do have an announcement. So regarding, as a follow-up to what Jessica just summarized from last night, I did also attend the Affordable Housing Committee meeting yesterday morning. They made a motion to ask and agreed in the majority to ask me if the planning commission would consider taking up one issue in our next meeting, which is the 25th, which would then, if we came to an agreement on it or any information that we felt was important, could present it to the city council as a commission in public hearing because things are in the city council's hands right now. It pertains very specifically to one number and I'm sorry, I'm looking for the document number and I, it's just I'm finding it right here.
It's 1.8 units per.
It's that issue, yes, so let me continue. So, so they are, they are concerned about some unintended consequences that they have, they've really dug into that and they have found some unintended consequences that actually startled me. There's one in particular that, so this, I'm not asking to get into the discussion tonight. I can summarize one in as simple as, you know, we worked very hard with our conservation PUDs to ensure that we didn't have McMansions by putting in our four units per acre, yet in effect in these 1.8, when you have one acre, we're basically requiring a McMansion because all you can build is one house. So, it didn't occur to me, we never discussed that, that what happens with those smaller parcels, there's pieces that came to light in their due diligence. They're asking if we would agree to add this to the December-January 25th agenda so that if we do come through, happen to find something that we feel we can act on in terms of making a suggestion to the city council, we'd still have that time before the open hearing. But I couldn't promise anything would be on the agenda because that's up to Jessica and Paul and whatever, whatever it would be, I don't know if I should make a motion.
Yeah, or a vote of the group.
Okay, so if that's the case.
Jessica, I mean Monica, if we, if we changed anything, that would require another public hearing after the 7th of February.
I think, I think what Monica is asking is if we, if we did discuss it and we had a, we could make a public, a public comment or provide a comment during the hearing and because it's in the draft, you know, the council can always take something out of the draft or make a tweak to the draft. We're not, the draft that's in front of them, so.
Right, I think Michael is correct though, that if the council, let's say you were to discuss it on the 25th, the council receives it on the 7th. If they were to wish to make any changes at that point, they would need to warn another public hearing after that. So it doesn't matter the scale of the change, they have to hold another hearing if they make a change on or after the 7th, so.
But we could nevertheless discuss it as a future amendment.
So, all I'm, all I'm tasked with tonight to honor the motion of the Affordable Housing Committee is to ask if the majority want to put it on the 25th and if not, it would potentially go on the future agenda.
Duncan and then Bernie?
Yeah, I'm sorry Monica, I missed, what is it? I missed, what was their content, what was the issue they had?
So, they are asking that we put on the agenda a discussion about the decision to go from areas that are already four acres per unit, four units per acre, that we had changed in the draft to 1.8. And the reason that we changed that is because they are on lots that are less than four acres and if we didn't change it, then a parcel that's neighboring to, a parcel of 3.9 acres that's neighboring a 4.1 acre would be able to have more density on it than the 4.1 because the 4.1 is required to be a conservation PUD. And so we put in a measure to try to prevent that from happening, but the unintended consequences, there are unintended consequences, there's more than the one example that I gave. So they're asking to have a discussion about that. They can offer more of what they learned when they really dove into that for us to consider. I do think we want to have the discussion, it's the question of timing. So, I strongly encourage us to have the conversation, it's just the question of timing.
Bernie or Duncan, you want to follow up on that?
Just, I guess to follow up on what Monica said, I would, I would like to hear from the Affordable Housing Committee about what they dealt in, what they found.
So that's what they're, if it's on the agenda, they'd be happy to come and, I have a whole, I mean, a whole bunch of information that I, but I don't, it's not the intention to get into that tonight, so.
And I'm just saying, if we did it, I would like to hear from them as to what they.
So, that would be part of the motion.
So, and this actually stems back to my original question a few minutes ago. My personal opinion as a party of one is that, you know, it's in the city council's hands right now. And as such, I kind of feel like comments and concern should be addressed to the city council and then, you know, the city council will provide us with direction on what they want us to look at. And certainly if that was one of the things that they wanted us to look at, or if we decide after, you know, whatever they do, that we want to look at it, I certainly think that would be appropriate and having affordable housing and would be appropriate as well. I'm just concerned because I, there's probably other unintended consequences of what we've done and I'm, I'm just not sure we want to, again, my opinion, go down the path of trying to chase things without having the city council's direction on what we should be chasing, so.
Other discussion?
I guess what I would add to that is this was a formal motion made by a city committee asking us to take this up before the public hearing so that, you know, and no other committee necessarily in that formal manner asked us to do that. So there is that piece of it.
Certainly we can make a motion and vote on it.
Right.
You've given a very good discussion as to the merits of that and I've expressed some concerns with that, but you know, certainly if we want to do a motion and vote on it, I'm, I think that's appropriate for sure.
Isn't it the, isn't the purview of the chair and the planning director to set the agenda and that item can be put on there without us voting?
There is, it is. I don't, so yes, it's true, Paul or I could put things on the agenda, but this actually, you know, came as a request to the group and it's kind of going, like Bernie said, it's kind of going back and it's under the city council right now. So, I mean, I think the idea of voting if we want to take it up now and try to get it to them at their hearing versus maybe looking at it in the context of some of this other small lot work we're doing in the next couple of months, that's where, yeah, I don't, I don't want to on my own just make a decision.
I think what I would offer is some of what I have learned through their due diligence is something I'm really glad that I know now. Because as this draft is approved, which hopefully, you know, we're moving in that direction, it will stand out. I can give you one or two other examples if it's helpful, I don't know if we do that now, but in order, yeah.
Paul?
Obviously, this is your decision as a commission, you guys do as you choose. I think procedurally, it's a little bit messy. The council had a list of items, including this one, on their 22, they did not pass a motion to submit it. The Affordable Housing Committee, you're right, did make a specific request of you. Several committees, however, have made specific recommendations to council on what their views are. They may feel just as strongly about the items that they have brought forward for one group to sort of bring it to you so that you bring it to council, might feel like that, that issue is being elevated above other issues and that is your prerogative, but sort of keep in mind that one committee chose that path, other committees chose to go directly to council. So procedurally, you may be setting up a disproportionate sort of response that in future rounds, you may find that every committee then says, okay, well, commission, we want you to then re-review the thing you've given to council so that it's got the oomph of coming from commission. Procedurally, I think you'd be, I would recommend that if you want to take it up, please feel free to take it up, but do so after council's taken their action or it's in their hands now, they could direct you to review it. I think that those would be more clean paths frankly than a committee asking you to take it up.
I guess that I feel similarly uncomfortable, I wouldn't feel comfortable just adding it to our agenda, kind of for that reason. The council did, it was one of the 22 issues that were in that table and the council specifically voted to not forward the list to us. I mean, and they didn't call out specific items other than this PUD one, so. I guess, I don't know, I would, I would prefer that we advocate for the whole thing kind of as I've been doing and defending things that we've kind of voted on in context, but. So, and I don't know, I guess I just, it feels like Paul says messy and it sets up a weird precedent of people coming back to us to have us re-way in. But I agree with Bernie, I'm very happy to look at it and make sure that it's what we want, but it feels like the timing is.
I just procedurally, everything that has been brought up is what concerns me.
Okay, onto the agenda.
Sure, did you make a motion?
Well, I mean, if you're the chair and you can set the agenda, so I don't know that we need a motion if you want to own making the decision, I'm okay with that. I, I brought forth the request.
Are, is, are people generally comfortable with taking up the issue in the next short term, like next few months, but not next week or next meeting? So that we'll address it, we'll re-review it, but maybe a little more in the context of where we want development?
Yeah, I mean, I would just ask that, it can be after the next public hearing, but I would ask that we at least have an opportunity to review what the issue is so that you guys are all aware because you should know. Yeah.
And could we have something written or so we could in preparation, that'd be really helpful.
I mean, the Affordable Housing Committee has forwarded to me a review, but then there's even more that came out in other conversations that, so yeah.
Can we get that? I know Paul fairly recently sent us a packet of additional comments. Can we get that? There's just a packet of additional comments or additional.
So I will send to you the information that they forwarded to me most recently. I'll see if there's any other additional and I'll include some other, like there's a particular.
Yeah, that'd be great.
I think, I think this feels like a much more comfortable plan, so we'll.
You do have public.
Sandy? And this isn't on our agenda, so we're really just focused on the timing piece and not.
I just wanted to say that if I had felt that the planning commission had been aware of these consequences in their discussion of this particular proposal, I would feel entirely differently about your putting it on the agenda. I'm just saying, I don't think any of you, as far as I know, at least Monica for sure, had, was aware of these consequences. That's all I want to say.
Okay, yeah, I think that we probably all had varying levels of individual delving into it. I mean, knowing that it was going from four units to an acre to 1.8 units per acre, I think that there was a general awareness of reduction of density in these areas, so. But maybe not to the extent that when we discuss it again, we'll get into. Okay, agenda, any other announcements? Okay, so any, any additional staff report?
Council is, completed their review or their presentation of the budget and held the public hearing last night on the capital improvement plan. Next week, they will meet to finalize the budget. There's an interesting discussion going on about how to address the penny for PAS and the penny for conservation open space that is, was voted upon voters as being one cent on the tax rate with the change to the, to the grand list through the reappraisal, one cent represents a higher number and a greater proportion of the budget. And so the council was wrestling with whether they felt that that was clearly the intent of the voters at the time or whether they should seek clarification from the voters. They're going to be talking about that next week and will make their decision. There was also a communication from a member of the public who was interested in cannabis sales. The way it works under Vermont law is that, under the new law, a municipality can authorize cannabis retail, it requires a vote of the public and of course, the zoning needs to match that. The economic development committee may be providing a recommendation to council. Tom Bailey's here from the economic development committee, may have an update as of an hour ago on this.
Thank you. You want to hear?
Sure.
I haven't seen, I just opened your agenda. I came because I'm the rep from the economic development committee dealing with infill in the Wilson Road, Shelburne Road, I gather it's something you're dealing with. So, so that's why I showed up. The, we had a straw poll after a presentation by cannabis guy whose name I've got for you.
The public here, Tom?
Would you mind either speaking at one of the mics so that the people remotely can, can be heard?
And keep the mic close to your face.
So this is Tom Bailey in case you missed that.
Anyway, we sort of took a straw poll because it wasn't on, it wasn't on our agenda. And spoke about cannabis. And we heard him out. The straw, the majority of our, of our. Oh, that's a different, it's brighter green.
Paul, we can't hear you.
I think we just.
Can you hear me now? Okay. The Shane Lynn spoke with us, we took a straw poll where a majority of the economic development committee would recommend for, that the city council consider putting it on the ballot for approval. That's apparently the state process where the voters have to, have to actually opt in and then the normal process of zoning and whether it's handled by local control or however it's going to be done goes forward. They are looking to operate a retail site on Farrell Street. And he, you know, I'm sure he'll be presenting, I think he's planning to present at the city council on the 18th.
Dissenters?
What?
Were there any dissenters?
Well, yes, it was just a straw poll. But I think the dissenters, of which I was one, was more, we weren't, it was new ground for us, so we would like to have known more. I think the people that voted for it were more inclined to, indicated they'd support it was, it's, it would give the voters a chance to chime in and, you know, state of preference.
I would assume your committee is going to have to take a vote, so that would help the city coun, sorry. Your committee would take a vote, so it'd be official that then the city council could see that vote. That's the whole purpose of committees.
It is, except that this was just rolled out, it was not on our agenda, so therefore we couldn't really take a vote, it wasn't warned and we're not meeting again until the beginning of February. So by that time, all of, that train will have passed for city, for town meeting.
You got out of it easily, okay.
No, no, we love it rendering economic opinions about economics in the city.
So all that to say that if the council ultimately decides to put it on the ballot and depending on which ballot they put it on, there may be a work item for you to consider from the zoning side, where the appropriate places are for sales and for, and for growing. You have some standards and your regulations presently, but only for the medical marijuana and the commission's guidance to staff, gosh, like nine years ago in that past was if it ever gets expanded, you'd like it to come back to you for, to evaluate and so we would do that. And there are some very basic guidelines that the Cannabis Control Commission has for municipalities to consider, so. No action at this time.
Well, thank you, Tom. So I think we can move on to the discussion of LDRs, so we have our look at infill development and higher density and mixed use areas, starting with the draft language, which we have. So, a few months ago, we had seen some initial language and had decided to hold off on it, so now it's back and revised and better. Do we, where would you like to start? Kelsey or?
Go for it, Kelsey. Don't forget to put your mic on.
I've been turning on everyone else's mics instead of not my own. So, the first thing that we wanted, that we did send around in the packet, a draft infill and redevelopment PUD. Paul informed me that before I came on board, a much more complex draft of a similar tool was circulated and through some pretty significant discussions between Paul and myself and discussing the goals of what, what infill, what, what do you truly want to regulate with infill and what do you want to be flexible? We actually cut a lot out of the, a lot of complexity out of that other draft and made it a much more streamlined tool. So I guess I don't, I'm not sure if I, if there are questions about the draft, I'm not sure the best way to go about it, if you'd like more of a presentation about the purposes from me or discussion of the draft itself and that could actually lead into what Jessica was talking about, about a more generalized PUD option as well.
Seems like there's some bigger strategic things that could help guide us versus getting, I mean, in my opinion, I mean, including like in the memo, tying it into the.
So the current, the draft LDRs as they stand now have TND PUDs that are much, for much larger properties and much more residentially focused. And we realized with the requirement that individual principal uses be on their own and principal buildings be on their own lots, we've ended up with a situation where there are, paired with underlying zoning and underlying lot acreage requirements, we've ended up in a situation where there are certain projects have, would not be able to go forward where they would otherwise be really good projects. Because they would create lots that are too small or because of some flexibility that they no longer have if there is no general PUD. And especially in areas where commercial and mixed use infill are desirable. We've, that mentally for us is focused primarily on the Shelburne Road corridor and the Williston Road corridor and parts of Kennedy Drive. Which is fairly straightforward. So, so yeah, so the tool of the PUD is to, is. So, so yeah, so, so the tool of the PUD is to, is written to focus on context. The DRB having to analyze surrounding land uses, surrounding building appearances, like how everything else around a site is looking. And really focus on some of the walkability questions, the efficient use of space, fitting into the greater context and those sorts of, those sorts of issues to then allow for greater flexibility on small parcels.
Yeah. And just to add to that, when you first left, looked at it in August, some of the feedback that we got from you was this is going, this is going in a good direction, but it sure seems complex and it sure seems difficult for the DRB. We sort of took a half step back based on the guidance that you'd given us last month to, to say, no, let's focus on these mixed use areas. And we said, what are the identified problems that you're looking to address? And I think staff's takeaway in some of this was that as you've been discussing PUDs generally, there have been opportunities that you saw for conservation PUDs, you saw opportunities for traditional neighborhoods and creating sort of a new product in, in some of those areas. In the built up areas like Shelburne Road, like Williston Road, we had heard a lot less of the, here's the pro, here's a major problem that we're trying to fix, other than the opportunity for more infill for more density, that there wasn't necessarily like, oh, you know, the Larkin Terrace building that went in and the buildings that have gone in that replaced the old motel at at Hadley Road and the New England Federal Credit Union rebuild, that these were going in the wrong direction. It was more like, how do we facilitate this to happen? And so in looking at this, we felt that the draft that you saw last fall was had some really good stuff in it, but it was a very, very complex document and also was very much angling towards infill that would be, you know, nicely fitting, but also very much oriented towards sort of very, sort of small buildings tucked in amongst others, which would be a really wonderful fit in like downtown Montpelier. But given our scale, the scale of infill that we have is going to be more like the examples that I just gave. So we felt like there are a bunch of tools already in the toolbox that you have. You've got an urban design overlay district. You've got some, you've got height standards. You're about to have some additional transportation standards. You have site plan standards that say where buildings need to be related to the street. That ultimately what may be the solution that you're looking for is a little more direction in the flexibility of a PUD. And so that's where Kelsey did a lot of sort of, let's strip out a lot of the minimum densities, which frankly, aren't going to be relevant on a Shelburne Road, because everybody's going to be way over a minimum density of four units an acre. Let's strip out this, the, the the, the really detailed analysis of the uses that are surrounding it in order to find the right piece. And instead, let's focus on outcomes, which was part of the draft also of being thoughtful of what's next to you. Including a civic space in a redevelopment and then giving the board some latitude to figure out what works well in the context of what's around it. So that they've got a little more direction than the current regulations, which basically say, be innovative. Which is, you know, that's tough for the board.
That's below my notes and questions relate to that.
So that's, that's the sort of big picture of it, Monica, of what's in here. The second part of the conversation that we wanted to chat with you about that Jessica alluded to is there's potentially an opportunity to address a issue that has come up from multiple angles to council at the same time, which is several counselors, counselor Really, counselor Emory, counselor Coda, all raised last night. What are we doing for these sort of infill properties on Shelburne Road that Kelsey referred, referenced? What do we do and how do we respond to an applicant who's saying, hey, I've got my approval, I'm half built out. I want to make a change to my PUD. There's no more PUD available. How do I make a minor change structurally? And there was a bunch of questions around that. We took a look at this today, and I know that this is a little bit on the fly, but we thought, boy, this infill PUD in its more streamlined manner form is really the former PUDs with structure around them. It's the ability to give the, the board some flexibility from underlying standards, lot sizes, block standards, things like that, but with more heft to it, other than just the word innovation of saying, here's, here's some examples of outcomes we're looking for. And by the way, we want to make sure that there's civic space, open space in it. And also we want to be clear that the board has flexibility, but not on Article 12. The environmental protection standards. Those have been written. That's not an area that gains additional flexibility. So that's the sort of wider conversation that we wanted to check in with you about. We've talked with the council chair and, and they would be, she, and we've talked a little bit with others, that they would be possibly willing to either consider adding a general PUD next week. Or if the commission felt like you wanted to spend a little bit of time with it, asking for, taking their action that they'll take on February 7th and then saying, could you deliver something in a few weeks after that to demonstrate responsiveness to the feedback they're getting of functionality?
Well, because again, if they added it next week, there would have to be an additional hearing.
They add it next week, it's, they've got time. If they add it after next week, they don't.
Got time for.
To, to do it before. If they, they have a meeting on the 18th, that's more than 15 days in advance of their here. So their deadline would be Tuesday to take action. So there's, there's a possibility of, I think that this is among a variety of issues the council talked about, this was one that had support from a number of different folks of wanting to make sure that the regulations are functional. Regardless of viewpoint on a number of the issues that you all spent months and months wrestling.
Yeah. This issue appeared to be outside of policy or, or, you know, general standpoint. And, and I'm not saying this, but the idea of like a bridge, like they called it like a bridge PUD. So there wasn't like a missing, like a missing piece. And they, they were asking if it was possible for, for staff to get something to them. So Bernie and then Michael.
I'm sorry, I haven't been sticking up my hand. I've just been waiting, but.
Oh, okay. Sorry. I. Okay, then Michael.
I'll let Michael go first.
My preference is for us to do this right, but since it's been so radically simplified, I think we could do it in, in a short time. You know, in a few weeks. And then if, if the council wants, we, we have a public hearing on this only. And there, and, and then after that, which, this is not controversial. A, a public hearing is probably not going to produce any comment or request for change. We could get it to the council pretty quickly. They could have also a very simple public hearing. And we could get this on the books in a couple of months.
Bernie?
Yeah, I was just gonna, so I, I like where the language is headed. I worry about trying to, you know, there was talk about trying to get it for next week. You know, trying to jam it through and have unintended consequences. I certainly agree with Michael that doing it as a a high priority and knocking it out fairly quickly. But I want to make sure we spend adequate time on it so that we understand what we're doing and we try to minimize unintended consequences.
Monica?
The two things that now understanding this better, the two things that worry me are the fact that we agreed that before, well, in my perspective, before we do anything with the Shelburne Corridor, we need to hear from the Bike and Ped Committee on Safety. If we're going to be adding residential units, we need to know, no matter where it is, whether it's across from Denny's or one of the auto blocks, whatever, that people can safely get from point A to point B. Children cannot cross Route 7 to get to Orchard School. We need to have a plan and it needs to be safe. And we're going to be adding housing for people. So I, I don't see anything about safety in here for residents in that kind of manner. Now, maybe it fits into our Shelburne Road corridor piece, something different. My, but my point is that's paramount. And anyone who's going to start building something needs to have that top of mind when, in whatever they're drafting. The second thing that I believe I was in the minority on, so I understand that I'm bringing something back up that we may have voted on. However, I still keep coming back to noise. And I understand that in our Shelburne Road corridor, we have buildings immediately on the road. I did forward just to all of you two seconds ago, I'm having trouble with my mail. But an example of the Hilton that's being redone on Williston Road. And that design is brilliant because what it's doing is it's putting on 89 a hotel where people are going to stay for a night. But behind that is a residential mixed use building. So it's brilliant because the hotel is blocking the noise. It's a barrier from, from the highway, right? It's a smart design. Yes, the parking lot's out in front. Yes, you know, but it, it, I think that, you know, so I don't want to gum things up and slow things down, but I do think these two issues are something we really should reconsider or take, take into more consideration because we're talking about where people live. The other thing was, we also talked about talking to developers about the private outdoor space. So we didn't brief the committee yet that we asked to investigate that. So they haven't even started their investigation. It could be so simple. It could be a non-issue for developers to include a Juliet balcony for everybody. So I just, I guess I worry about turning something over too soon unless these elements can be in some way addressed before a big building is plopped somewhere and there's no safety and it's right on the highway. Seven being a highway. So.
So I, I think that you know, everything everybody's brought up is really good. And you know, part of the discussion I was hearing from the council was is there a, could staff bring us a bridge tool, like a quick tool to temporarily fill a gap? So there's no like big glaring hole while the commission really works through the details of what they're working on now. So I did hear some kind of conversation to that effect. So I think that's maybe part of this discussion is, is something like this, something that we would entrust staff to like fill a hole in a bridge kind of temporary situation? While we spend like a couple of months, like really hammering out like some of these really important details to add to a temporary thing or replace a temporary thing. So I think that I just want to make sure that that's part of.
Is that to bridge a gap between the PUD types we've already written and this type of PUD?
Yeah. So it's to bridge the gap between our existing regulations that are in place, which have PUD types that cover all areas of the city. And the draft that we've presented to council that they're considering right now, which has no PUD types for kind of large areas of the city. Like Shelburne Road Corridor, Williston Road Corridor. So in those areas, if something wanted to be developed, it would really need to adhere to the, the strict subdivision regulations. There's no, there's no way to have kind of flexibility in the kind of smaller lots and clustered kind of development. And maybe I'm missing something.
Add to that to say that some of the feedback that councils received is also on not just new development, but and there's an application that was just submitted, for example, Spear Meadows on Spear Street has its full approval, went all the way through the courts. There's a request to change a piece of the tra, the transportation pa, pattern that the Public Works Department supports. The methodology, since there's not a PUD anymore, is a little bit tricky on how the DRB will review that. Is it a subdivision amendment? Is, what is it? That's, that's a really simple example. The O'Brien brothers brought up, you know, a more complex example of they've gotten approval, they, they've done some of the development. Or actually, in that case, they haven't, but they have an approval. What if, you know, market condition changed and they say, well, you know, we want to put a little bit more triplexes instead of duplexes in the footprint lots? There isn't really a PUD eligible to consider a change. So that's some of the feedback they've been getting. And then there's other areas. You've talked about Williston Road, Shelburne Road. There's also the airports. There's industrial areas. Not every single one of these things needs a PUD. You've made other changes to make it so that things don't need to always be a PUD. But there are circumstances where it might be a little bit tricky is what they're hearing.
Uh, Michael?
Monica's raised some interesting things about safety, lighting, noise. But nobody has raised anything about what we might do in, to, to mitigate climate change. Which I always think should be sort of foremost in our minds right now. I'm not quite sure what those things are, but they may relate to the, the use of electricity rather than, than gas. They may relate to the requirement to use solar. Those kinds of things. Because we really do have to have climate change mitigation in foremost in our minds in everything we do. So have safety, lighting, noise, climate mitigation.
Okay, Monica?
Um, listening to a little of the council's concerns last night about this and the two examples that Paul gave, to me, there's a difference between a development that's midstream. Right? That was working under an old set of the PUD, which now isn't there anymore, which is the O'Brien case. And it sounds like it might be this other case as well. So that's a project that's midstream, that's all of a sudden like, doesn't have its tool. And they're literally having bulldozers ready to go. Versus the bigger conversation that we're having about, you know, something like the the, the Denny's or an auto thing where they're still in their current state. Yes, we can work quickly, but my point is they're not midstream. I, I think from a planning perspective, they're not midstream. They may be farther along than, than we know, but it, to me, the, the urgent need that I heard the council talking about last night was for those developments that are already in production and you know, digging the holes and all of a sudden need like a street change. So, which is different than rushing something that could result in a new project that we don't have some of these major issues built into. They can be done in a, you know, in a an ease. I like the idea of where this is going. But we can't just rush that. And we already made the decision that we were going to ask the city committees to advise us. We've got to give them that chance. And it's been two months and we haven't briefed any of them. So you know, I, I guess my, my question is, can we isolate the immediate need for, you know, that they'd be willing to put in as something that's specific to the projects that are midstream that need that immediate and not make it available to new projects yet. He, have them, if they want to start, go under the old ones, old, you know, subdivision.
Bernie?
Well, so Monica was headed in that exact question, her comment that I was going to make. And that's the, she makes a, a good point of what's in the stream versus what's not yet started. And so my question is, is, is there a solution that's as simple as grandfathering the existing regulations with respect to things that are already in the stream? And allowing us time then to work on the stuff that's going to be new and take our time with it?
Before you answer that, I have exactly the same question, whether the O'Brien brothers' problem can be handled by our current regulations rather than the new ones that are not law yet. Right now, you, you, developers have to comply with both. And.
So certainly to, to answer both of, or maybe all three of your questions. The council The council could choose to, you know, ask our staff, legal counsel, to come up with a tool to say, how do we hold the current rules for those projects? That's their prerogative. They they may choose to do that and that's that's fine. What we wanted to bring to you this evening was this idea of you're starting to work on an infill PUD. Since you are, since you've done work, there was an opportunity, I'm not saying it necessarily has to be done instantly, but there's an opportunity to say, oh, maybe this all gets rolled into one thing and it can be done quickly. I think I'm hearing that you would like to move precipitously, but not, uh, not at lightless speed. Yes, and that's fine. I think that's the conversation we wanted to have with you. We still think from the staff perspective that there's, that there is an opportunity based on if you like the direction that Kelsey's draft is is going in to wrap these things in. I will also say that while they are new projects on Shelburne Road, there's at least three of them. And they are, you know, exciting opportunities for the city to address things that people have been annoyed about for years, like the Pizza Hut sitting. And, you know, it doesn't mean it won't be there in three months. But the there there are folks ready to go to do it and they could have done something under the old rules. They are presently not able to because there isn't a PUD type that works. And sticking to the underlying zoning, the DRB doesn't have the tools to give the flexibility that would have created the the ability. You could get back there. I think the staff recommendation would be if you want to do it as a as a separate thing, that's perfectly fine. But here's an opportunity to jump on something and move quickly and be, Ted, you've always asked me, if you see an opportunity, share it with you guys, that that something's happening in the market. Something's happening in the market here where there's several properties. That one, the Pizza Uno property in front of Shaw's, I want to say there's a fourth one and I can't think of which one it is on Shelburne Road that are seeing opportunities. Also, I've been reached out to from.
Shitgo Station.
Uh, that one's got an approval, actually. Oh, I've been reached out to from the folks interested in the vacant parcel at the corner of Kennedy and Heinsberg. South west corner. So again, sort of similar situation.
Zero lights in the street for pedestrians. It's extremely dark.
I don't know. I mean, it kind of what Paul's saying and the fact that multiple councillors did bring up that Pizza Hut property. You know, is there? And I don't know. Yeah, I feel like, I feel like what I was hearing from the council is can staff bring us something to to deal with this? We know it's not going to be perfect, but we feel like this is a kind of a technical issue and we're going to miss some of these opportunities. It would not be coming from us other than, you know, we've seen a draft. It's it's pretty close. Like if we would go with the route of saying, staff, this looks pretty good. We feel like it's generally in the direction of what the council is requesting. And I mean, I wouldn't be approving anything other than to say, you know, what we looked at is pretty close. We're going to give staff some general direction to see if the council is interested and thinks it might meet their needs. But it would be probably not us going through our normal process if we went that route.
Well, I had my hand up. So, I mean, I do think that some of what, there are sections in here that I think that we can add something as a starting point. You know, I mean, you must have a way to connect to a bike path. And if there isn't one, you have to help build it that that gets people off of Shelburne Road. I mean, school buses are not allowed to stop on Shelburne Road. So where is a school bus going to stop if there's kids in the building? Like they have to, that has to be part of the plan here. And if we need to do something to help with that, because we of course want them to do something there. But whoever lives there has to safely get around. And then just, I mean, I feel like we can, we have a, the other thing, privacy is in here. But it doesn't pick up the the thing that we put into the other PUD about requiring currently the private or semi-private outdoor space per unit. That's a very simple thing we can pick up and put in here. So I feel like we we can move expeditiously and make some general statements that hopefully in time the Bike Ped Committee can help us improve. But we have to have something in here and it doesn't include it. So if we even set aside time tonight, Sunday, I don't know, to come up with our list of things.
I have said before, when we were talking about the density and and you're going up four or five stories on Williston Road. Sorry, that I'm really concerned about where are people going to recreate? And this is sort of along the lines of what Monica is saying is is that, you know, there's a, I was reading a book and in this economist was talking about that people have argued that social interactions are stronger in less dense areas and that people are less likely to know their neighbors in urban areas in the city. Well, we are creating a city where it's a long Sheldon Road, where it's around Williston. And I think it's incumbent of the planning commission. It's easy for the development committee or so on to say, well, let's have more housing. That's great for the vitality and taxpayer, getting more tax revenue. But it's incumbent on us again to talk about that quality of life, that if we're going to jam people in in four or five stories, that where the hell are they going to take their dog or recreate? Or are they going to, you know, sit in their apartments and stare out the window? So that that's my dilemma is is that I want more density. I want affordable housing, but I also want that quality of life where people can actually touch a piece of grass. And I don't know how we accomplish that. This is sort of the lines. I want to accommodate these things are in the hopper. So I don't want to hold things up. But again, I don't want to suddenly open the floodgate floodgates and have a half a dozen other projects. And we can't do anything about what Monica is talking about. And what I'm trying to talk about is to to make sure that the project is not just jamming in more people because that's what the Housing Committee has recommended. That's my.
I I couldn't agree more. I mean, I've seen lots of places around the world where there are high-rise apartments, but around every single one of them is a significant chunk of green space, which includes a park for children and often include includes an area for the residents to have barbecues, just green space. And between high-rises that are publicly subsidized and high-rises that are extremely luxurious, right next door. But there's a big amount of green space around each. Now, these are ten, ten or more stories, which we haven't been, we we haven't got yet. In my view, yeah, we don't have to go that far. But Ted's point is is right. We need green space around any of these buildings.
Completely agree. So just, so I know there's this section each that talks about streets, parking, streets, parking, buildings. And then it says civic spaces and site amenities being fifteen percent of the buildable area. It doesn't specifically talk about the open space types. Should those types be addressed specifically in addition to these other things? Or or are we really only seeing the civic space and site amenities, this fifteen percent in the way that it's written?
In the updated language, a civic space essentially means a park or parklet that is done at the scale of a subdivision. A site amenity tends to be the things associated with the single building. There's obviously some overlap between those two, but that's sort of the way to to think about it. You have your series of civic spaces, site amenities. I think the appropriate way to connect these two together would be to say, by zoning district or by overlay district, here's what's eligible in a given place. It, you could have a, whether it's the infill PUD or it's the infill PUD expanded to be a general PUD, you could say fifteen percent. And then depending on the context, if it's the industrial district, that's a very different need of employees having a chance to, you know, be outside. And, you know, as Tech Park has done, they could, you know, designate a nice walking trail for them versus something on Shelburne Road that maybe is the scale of what Farrell, excuse me, not Farrell, Larkin is doing, which might have an actual, you know, park type thing. Or you get down to the scale of like a Denny's and maybe what the Denny's is on a, you know, acre and a third is there's a little spot for people to barbecue outside and some benches and a nice little fire pit, which is what Eric Farrell built on the old, what's the name of the gym that was on? Olympiad, on the Olympiad property, there's a little like, you know, two barbecues and a little pit, gas-fired outdoor pit where people can sit around and just enjoy a little bit of space outside. It doesn't have to be big. Or even next door here, Allard Square has a little like circular seating area where they can just enjoy a little bit of outdoor time at the scale of, you know, a third of an acre. That's a different kind of thing.
Michael?
Yeah, surely the amount of space you need relates to how many residents there are in a particular building, multifamily building, apartment building. The more people that live in that very dense building, the more space you need. That's the ratio, I think we should look at.
Extend it a little bit further to say more users of the building. Because it may not only be about people who live there, it may be people who have an office job and they want to be able to sit outside and enjoy lunch outside.
You mean an office job in the same building?
Right. Well, let's say that same building instead of being housing was.
Or it's commercial on the ground floor and 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 residential on the next twenty.
Yes, if we'll we'll talk when we get the first twenty-one story building. That would be wonderful, but.
Monica? So what I think that what I'm not hearing in any of that, though, is the connectivity. It seems to me that our official map should have, that we should be doing some of the work to create where we want the safe bike pedestrian connectivity to happen so that they don't have to. Yes, they need to make sure fifteen percent, but we should be giving them guidance on, you know, how we envision the kids getting from that corner to the school safely. Like what, I know I keep saying kids, but I'm talking at any age, that people can walk their dogs safely and not have to risk being hit at six thirty at night and ending up in the ICU for two months on in a coma. So we know what happens here. So we have a responsibility to make sure that we are mapping that out in advance. And it seems like if we can do some of that legwork to map out, you know, yes, you need to budget your X percent for civic space, but we wanted to tie into this safe master plan to get people moving, not on a sidewalk that's this wide on a highway that we can't control because we don't control Route seven and Williston Road, you know, that too. It deserves its own plan that we helped design. Now, we can't do that overnight and I'm not saying, you know, slow these things down. But again, I mean, we've waited two months to even brief the Bike Ped Committee on our request. There there are some things, maybe we can, it's been busy, obviously. So maybe we have to kind of work on two levels here and provide potential developers with a plan that they can attach to.
Right. Well, and and I think I I totally agree with what you're saying, Monica. And I think that there's two or three pieces that are coming together this spring to address this. So one is, if you choose with something like the PUD draft that's here, there is language like standards for pedestrian orientation that says, introduce connecting sidewalks, pedestrian paths onsite and offsite as necessary to serve the develop. This is guidance that does not exist today in the regulations for PUD. It says, avoid blank walls and create a pedestrian oriented detail so that it's a pleasant walking environment. That's what the PUD could potentially do. Separate from that, we've been talking about but have not delivered to you in a while, the updated Transportation Demand Management that's in your work plan. That is a tool to replace the traffic overlay district, which is a very blunt instrument, with incentives for developers to basically, well, requirements and incentives for them to create more pedestrian oriented environments. So the more things they do, the less they wind up paying in things like impact fees by creating connections to sidewalks, by participating in a bike share program, by having a car share program, by having showers associated with an employer. These are all pieces of the puzzle to make a more pedestrian oriented system. And then all of the work that the Bike Ped Committee is doing on the penny for PaaS and all of their capital planning, which is really important work, but obviously, you know, will take time to roll out these capital projects. You know, Williston Road sidewalk is a big project with a lot of property owners and a lot of, you know, negotiations on how to do that. And so I'd be a little bit reticent to wait to enact the zoning until you have all these things physically in place because it's going to be, that's a long, capital projects are a long process.
So I guess what what I'm asking is if we're going to move quickly on something and keep it minimal like this so that it's it's good. Is there a way that we can put some stakes in the ground to say not just fifteen percent civic space, but the vision is there's going to be a a path behind these buildings along Shelburne Road. So we're asking you in advance, we don't know what it's going to be yet, you don't need to do anything there yet. But when you create your building, you need to leave X space someplace where, and if we end up doing something different later, we'll just have to incorporate that because we're not going to ask them to move their building. But I'm just saying, if we don't ask for any of that now and just leave it up to them, like I'll make it a pretty facade to look at while they're walking by, there won't be a space for it. I think we need to put some kind of stake in the ground in a, in what seems to be a safe place. I mean, if you're thinking about, I'm just keep going to the corner of Swift and Spear there. And I mean, right behind it is the beautiful park. I mean, we know there's a beautiful park there. So in fact, it's a very livable, wonderful place because behind it is Farrell Park. But how can we start to think about how people can safely get there? There's no sidewalk at, well, barely a sidewalk on Swift. You know, like, can we offer?
I mean, I I would disagree a little bit there where Swift actually has a bike path and a sidewalk connecting there. And then you can walk up Lindenwood, a dead-end street and get right into Farrell Park. So to me, there's pretty good connectivity, maybe signage is needs to be improved, but that's an example to me of pretty good connectivity.
Well, for for what age? For what age group?
So I guess what I'm hearing is that this, we have a whole section in here on pedestrian orientation, but maybe some of the wording needs to be a little more clearly about the safety aspect of the, not just the connections, but the safety. And then our comprehensive plan actually does have a whole bike and pedestrian plan as part of it. I mean, it hasn't been updated in a few years, but the Bike Ped Committee did spend a significant amount of time to put that together and is in the comp plan.
But it's not, I don't think there's anything relating to these major roads in that, is there?
Yep, there's missing, look, although like missing bike paths and like, there's a lot in there. It might not be as comprehensive as what you're talking about.
But I don't think that if you go back and look at it, that is not based on residences being there. That's based on transportation, like people getting from other locations and passing through. It's not based on housing being right there. So if a kid's out on a skateboard, is it safe? That's not part of what.
Well, that's what I'm saying. I think I think we can, I mean, it sounds like we want to add language to that effect into the pedestrian, this thing. Michael?
Along the main transit corridors, Shelburne Road, Williston, we can, can we expect that there will be sidewalks and space for both pedestrians and bikers? When when these developments happen? Would that be a a normal thing that would happen on a major thoroughfare like like Shelburne Road?
I think that the question that I would pose back to you is, what would you be expecting of a private sector developer to do to improve a circumstance, understanding that it's Vtrans is right away? So in the example of Larkin Terrace, what they did was they tried something a little bit experimental of they created a twelve-foot wide sidewalk that goes straight to the street. But that's twelve feet or maybe fourteen feet of sidewalk width that they've expanded. that they've expanded the the um sidewalk in that area using some of their own land.
On Shelburne Road?
On Shelburne Road. Um, on Williston Road in parts of it, the city went from four lanes to three lanes, and so there is a bike lane. And there's a sidewalk. It's not necessarily, you know, it's not the widest sidewalk in the world, it's a normal sidewalk. It would be a pretty substantial capital project to start to change that along a, you know, two mile stretch. Um, the city certainly can be working on uh, and it already is, creating safe crossings across Williston Road, um highlighting the walking trails that connect Mayfair Park over to Crowdy Parkway that are, you know, uh um just sort of o- overland trails. That we can certainly do, and I I think that the council and and our city man, city offices really interested in how do we promote these trails more frequently, understanding that, of course, we also have to be able to maintain anything that's public infrastructure.
Okay, Duncan and Paul, I want to make sure I'm not missing you. I don't know if you had anything you wanted to say or add in. Paul Ingles?
I just wanted to mention that um PUD's original intention uh was to develop along transportation corridors and develop uh where there's access to uh services, where there's access to shopping and and restaurants and things like that. That's originally why there were PUDs is for that kind of development. And I really like what's being done along Shelburne Road with the Larkin Building and also with New England Federal Credit Union. That's the kind of housing, that's the kind of development we should be encouraging. Thanks.
Yeah, thanks. Duncan, did you have your hands up or were you saying no? I wanted to make. You can pipe up if you want.
Real quick, I I was going to say that um I like to let, I like the way this language has gone and it's uh it's simplified, which I'm always a big fan of. But I I think there's a lot of good language in there. I guess my question is certainly I hear um some hesitancy from a number of my fellow counselors about, you know, pushing this forward through, pushing this through too fast. And I get that, but on the same, on the other front, I I hear what Paul's saying, are we missing an opportunity by giving the council something that could serve as a stopgap? And I'm not sure, you know, if this language could fill that bill or not. I guess that's a question to Paul and my fellow counselors. How how comfortable are we giving him some sort of stopgap to at least get us, to not miss an opportunity?
Um, Kelsey?
Yeah, so I just wanted to address quickly um a little bit of work that I did today about adapting some of the language that's in this infill draft that I provided last week in the packet to a more general PUD that would be what more, like what Jessica's talking about is a stopgap. The purposes would be virtually identical, a lot of the same priorities about walkability and connections to existing transportation networks, uh con- context about what's sort of around them, just modifying some of the language to allow for and also to control a bit more some slightly larger PUDs, because some some of the infill PUD stuff is so almost self regulating when it's small enough that you can't do certain things, that you have to make it on a smaller scale. So I did put in a good, I did put in some work today to modify what I provided to you to apply to some more areas. The intention being it would apply to areas where other PUD types are not available. So it would not apply where a T, where currently the draft LDRs are written to require a TND. You couldn't opt out of a TND and do this general PUD.
And same thing for a conservation.
And the same for the conservation PUD. If there was something, if there was a type already available, you couldn't do a general one because that would more or less eviscerate the more specific ones. Um, but Paul actually put up on the screen just a couple of examples of some language that I added or changed. Just my only, my real point being, if we if we did want to do this in the coming weeks or months, from a staff perspective, it is possible. It's something that I put some work, it's certainly not perfect what I did today, but I think I got made some good steps. So with more guidance from the commission, um it's something that could be done in a in a reasonable amount of time.
So this is an update on what we've got.
So there's two versions. What you were sent is the more focused on the small scale, sort of four acres or less infill. And this is an adaptation of a lot of the same language and a lot of the same purposes to be a more generally applicable PUD.
So I I guess the, oh, please go ahead.
Well, I was just going to ask just a procedural question on, um, you know, you said that the city council wants something fairly quickly for a stopgap measure. Well, I think, you know, part of the concern for most of us is rushing. So my question is, is is what timeframe are they looking for something to have? And then the follow on is, is there something where we've already written it that we can meet that? Or or not? And then, you know, we would want to follow on right away with,
Sure.
you know, all of the things we've been talking about here, so.
Let me tackle your second question first. Um, I think that the, from our perspective, I'm going to turn it back to you and say, um, the, what you have in your packet today is a pretty pared down version. We're, from the staff end, we're pretty excited about it, but we wanted to hear, you know, does, is this meeting what you were hoping that you might see as as a more streamlined version of a PUD outside of TNDs, conservation PUDs? If it's headed in the right direction and it's getting pretty close, then we think that A, that can be done pretty quickly, B, to Kelsey's point, it can be adapted um in our view, pretty simply to a wider context, just being mindful of, you know, the scale of things. And so I I would sort of turn that back to you of saying, how did you feel about what you saw in your packet?
So, yeah, fine. But, you know, as we've heard from the discussion, you know, different commissioners want to add different elements. And so, you know, you add one and then now we're going to add another one. And the next thing you know, what was going to be fairly quick turns out to be something that requires a little bit more discussion and thought. And so kind of to my question, if if the if the council wanted something by next week, I would say, based on what I've heard, I don't think that that's doable. If they said in a month and we had maybe two meetings to go over it, maybe we could come up with something that would meet their requirement in a month with the understanding that we would still maybe have some additional work to do. So, you know, so that's, that's kind of where I'm at. If it's next week, I haven't heard where that's going to happen. If it's two meetings from now, something, I think we could, we could do it, so.
The conversation, well, my sense is the follow. If if the commission were to say, and and I'm not pressuring you to do so, if the commission were to say, hey, this looks fantastic, give it to us next week, I think council would probably accept that and say, hey, thanks, guys. That was really helpful to address these comments. As a uh alternate, if the council in their response to the feedback that they've gotten said, hey, our commission is on this and, you know, we know that we typically do two amendments a year, they feel pretty comfortable that something will be back in our hands in March. And that, you know, those of you who are anxious that your project has been approved and you need to make this amendment, just, you know, focus on a different part of your project for six weeks. That's not the end of the world. That's, that's a pretty short time.
I'd feel much more comfortable with that approach.
They would also be excited about that. If you were to come back and say realistically, we're six months out in this, I think they would accept it, but say, okay, well, let's not make any premature promises to the feedback that we've received.
Right.
I think those are sort of the three broad buckets that if you were to say, um, any providing some feedback on one of those, on on those three, I think that would be really helpful to council.
Yeah, and I, speaking for me, I'd say, you know, the six week timeframe is probably something where we could put up, put together something that's pretty good. Not to say that we might not want to do some additional tweaks, but it'd be pretty darn good in six weeks, I think.
Yeah, we might need one or two additional meetings, which I don't have a problem with either.
My question was going to be, I don't, we didn't get an answer, I think, on why can't the developments that are in process use the old regs? Why can't they use the old PUD as a stopgap until we get this in six weeks?
So that's council's prerogative, I guess, is what I'd say. If if they would like, they have not directed staff to create that. If they want to create that, they can ask us to do it.
But wait, what are you, I I'm just trying to understand, what would you even have to create if if basically we, the council said if if a PUD was removed from the regs, use the old regs?
That would have to be written into the draft regulations.
That's fine, but but is it, is there, what is your preference? Like, is, are you concerned, would you prefer that they not do that and that we do this, go this six week path? Or like, is there, it it seems to me like if if there's no harm, I mean, of course, we'd like them to use a newer, but they've already been working on the old, you know, we're talking about this time. It, I heard, I understand the council wanting to make sure, yeah.
I guess what I would say is if, depending on the answer to the question I just said uh about timelines, if the commission felt like you were a couple of months out from it realistically, then what the infill that could become a general PUD does is an improvement over the old rules without sort of being a uh, you know, throwing everything out. So for example, I I think that the commission would want to say that if you're making a change to a PUD, the the uh rules of Article Twelve should hold, that that's not a waivable thing, that's not in the old rules because Article Twelve wasn't in the old rules in such a way. If it's six months out, I would say maybe hold it. If it's two months out, I think that the development community could could probably time their, you know, oh, I need to make an amendment to my project to match that. So I think that's the feedback I would give them if asked.
So and of those examples you gave us, the street needing to change, the whatever's happening at the Hill O'Brien, you feel that that kind of six week going PUD-less, having nothing, um because the city council may vote next week or?
It's 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 there, so I would give them, this is what these scenarios are. They'll have to make a call as to say, you know, six weeks is probably a little bit tight, but let's say two to three months, whether that's something that they're happy with or not. I I.
But in the meantime, they would then default to the old regs or no? They would still just be basically in interim zoning?
Well, they would be under the proposed, once the council takes action, it would be under the adopted regulation.
But there isn't a PUD.
Right, that's the whole.
I know, that's what, that's, right, so we would leave them.
We would leave them with nothing.
With nothing. Why wouldn't it go back to?
Well, I'm saying that's council's choice. I I would say that if it was coming to be six weeks or eight weeks later than it was going to be a fix, that might be better than having a fix and then another fix six weeks later. The development community, you know, there's two things that they're really interested in. One is streamlined rules and two is consistency in rules. Those two things sometimes are fighting each other a little bit. And so this is an instance where would changing it twice in six, in in eight weeks be a good thing or a bad thing? I think that's what the council would need to wrestle with. I I, yeah.
So we shouldn't weigh in on, we should.
I will make sure that they're aware of the options there. I I don't think you all need to weigh on that piece of it.
Any other comments on this?
No, I think Paul's comment that, you know, asking a developer to wait six or eight weeks is not a terrible thing.
Well, especially if they know what's coming. I mean, if if the city council passes it and says, you know, the planning commission's actively actively working on this and they expect to have something by X. You know, I think people would wait for that, and I think that would buy us enough time to to do it right.
And we'll be working on it between now and February the seventh when they vote.
Yep.
Okay.
So we'll already gain some time.
And I'm sorry, but just to your point about giving us something and then change it again soon after, are we saying that we would be working expeditiously but that we would also work with these other committees to try to ask them to work expeditiously to give us their feedback? So that we can make sure that's there or do we plan to continue to evolve it? I just want to be realistic here. I mean, it doesn't need to take a year, but.
I think you all need to make a call about what needs to, what you feel you need to put into an infill or or general PUD. If you have things that you would like to ask committees to do and you would like them to say, we want you to decide this in February and come to us by the end of February on it because you feel that there's an urgency that council's giving you, there's nothing wrong with you passing along that timeline. And if they say we can't accomplish it in that timeline, then you have a decision to make. That's the same role that council is frequently in. You know, Mr. Bailey just spoke of an example earlier today of council's going to have to make a choice next week about whether to put the cannabis thing on the ballot for March. The committee has not had a chance to fully review it. They may decide to say, you know what, let's just do it in March. Or they may say, we want the committee to look at it and we're going to put it potentially on the ballot in August. There's nothing wrong with you taking that initiative. The LDRs are your responsibility statutorily. You are more than welcome and encouraged to make use of other groups if, but if you feel like you've got the answer, then please proceed.
We agreed that we don't have the answer because we we made a motion before that we would contact these committees about these specific things. We we've already, we can take it, we can do it again, but we agreed before that we would be asking these committees to do these things. So we did already make that decision. And I I mean, it doesn't need to be super in depth, but we need to brief them. I mean, I I, my opinion, we we made that decision. I don't know if anyone, if we make another motion about it now.
Leave them or do we need them to comment on this draft?
We, we made a motion that we would ask these committees, these specific things, um and that they would get back to us so that we could then ensure it's in whatever is coming in.
So so can I make a suggestion? I I think, you know, shooting for the six week, two month timeframe is probably reasonable. I think that the language that's here is a good starting point. And my recommendation would be two things. One is to have the commissioners look at this with respect to what they would like to see. And then if we're going to ask committees for stuff, and Monica, I know you've got a list started, but. Just let me finish, let, so.
That's a misrepresentation.
Fine. That we put together a list of specific asks for the committees, you know, in time for like, you know, our next meeting so that so that, you know, maybe we've already done a motion on it, that's fine, but it but it would, especially if it's tight timeframe, we want to make sure that we've adequately defined what all of our asks are so we can send our asks out with a deadline and get some response back. And I think if we do those couple of things, look at this with what we want to see changed and go out with our specific asks, we'll be, you know, it's a good approach, so.
Timing of that would be great. Um, if you chose to do that at your next meeting, what what staff can do between now and then is we can let these, the liaisons of the committees know, something's coming, please plan your February meeting to address these things. At your January twenty fifth meeting, you can decide what specific to this you're looking for feedback, because I know that the commission did take action. Monica, you're right. Some of it was you receive feedback generally in the last round of amendments.
These have to be specific asks, specific to this specific thing that we're working on to get the answers that we need to be able to finish this in a timely manner. Nothing else.
Yeah.
And and provide those committees with this draft so that they can.
Yep.
Okay.
That sounds good. Anything else on infill?
Wait, so what are we, are we going to then decide today that after this meeting is done, you will be contacting these groups on what we're asking them?
Well, I think you'll do that at your next meeting.
Okay.
But we're going to do the.
I will.
We're going to put together our asks between now and then.
That it's coming.
Okay.
And then I think, Monica, just to be um, talk about the whole committee thing. I think that Bernie like kind of laid out almost like a two tier ask. There's there's the asks very specific to this general PUD. And then I think we can also say, we also have some follow up from the general. And then I think we can also say, we also have some follow-up from the general comments that we have some questions or want feedback on, but that's on like maybe a, a different timeframe.
Right, lower priority.
Maybe there's like two.
Because if we want to get this to the city council, we really need to hop on it. And so I would be specific to getting this done.
So there's the possibility, some of the things that came out of the public comment that we said we want to ask them about, we maybe have them do it their following meeting or something. We, so they're not bogged down with.
Yeah, I guess I'm, where, where I'm still just confused is there's the stopgap, immediate measure that I understand that we need, that really is not even just for the transit overlay district. This is for Spear Meadow. I mean, this is a, a stopgap PUD. And separate from that, we're talking about Shelburne Road. We're very specifically meant to talk about the, you know, the transit overlay district infill. To me, I think we're talking about two different things.
I guess the way I would encourage that you think about it is we're pretty excited by the structure of this draft that it can be added to over time, that it's not about a stopgap and then something different. It's about version 1.0. And then you may choose in version 1.0, I'm going to jump on a Michael topic here, to include TDRs there. Or you may decide that version 2.0 says, we're going to take this general PUD that applies on Shelburne Road and after we've addressed some of, you know, the concerns about connectivity, we're going to say, hey, we can double the density in this area through TDRs. You could choose to do that immediately, you could choose to do that in the next round. It can build off the same exact structure rather than saying, we made the stopgap and now we're doing this other thing. It can be adding to rather than reinventing.
It's gone. Kelsey's one.
Oh, Kelsey, go ahead.
Sure, yeah. The, the only other thing that I just wanted to make sure is completely clear because it feels like a foundational building block to me and I apologize if I'm just retreading over the same ground. All relevant subdivision zoning district, oh, you know, urban design overlay, all of these other regulations that we have in the city would also apply. The PUD is not creating its own set of regulations and this is the only thing that would apply in an infill PUD. You still have everything else that would still apply. So I'm wondering, Monica, to your point, some of the stuff with bike safety, it's not, to me, it's not something that would only be relevant for these small infill PUDs. That's a citywide, you know, corridor-wide, applying to every property kind of goal. And maybe that's a longer, that's a, that's the conversation that goes into some of these, these other regulations that then also apply in the PUD, but apply in a more broad way to everything else. So I'm not sure where else it would, where it would live exactly. But it's possible that it's not something that needs to be specifically and in detail enumerated inside the PUD tool. It would be in sort of a broader place that then a PUD would be used on top of.
I find that very helpful and it's why at the beginning I said, I'm not sure if like this bike head conversation is something that comes up and is tied to the Shelburne Road overlay specifically. Like maybe it does fit there and that's fine, it just needs to be somewhere, as would the, the Hilton example we ho- pulled up here earlier. That seems to be more, if we allowed something like that on Shelburne Road, that seems to be more of a change to that Shelburne Road overlay.
Because when I just, when I was thinking of, when I was conceptualizing how to frame this, the infill PUD, it's, it's sort of a trade-off to, for, for developers and for the community where you get more flexibility to do what you might want to do, but you have to do these other things that, you know, make that worth it to the city. You have to, you know, be more walkable, have more connections, all of these things. So it's, it's, the PUD tool is focused pretty narrowly on that sort of flexibility trade-off where you can put a lot of regulation and a lot of other goals and principles and purposes into the more broadly applicable set of regulations.
Michael?
Yeah, does anybody have any questions on this draft that they would like to pose to Kelsey and, and Paul?
Yeah, that is a great question. Yeah, so it seems like there's, we are still on A. We are still on A, so there were a few things that were brought up that I was writing down. Like you had brought up how to address climate change, Ted brought up about the recreation space and open space. Monica brought up safety with the pedestrians. So I mean, if other people have other items they feel like are missing or they have questions on, this is a good time since.
Yeah, I mean, I made some notes as I read through them and probably some of the questions are answered later on in, in the draft, but right at the beginning, under the description and purpose, asked whether we shouldn't attempt to define the target areas for infill and redevelopment, which would be, which would happen in the city core and along it, along the transit corridors where we want high or the highest density possible. That was one question. My second question was, we've got in the, it's in yellow, so it's a question for us, I suppose, less than four acres. You know, why would we have a limitation? Isn't it possible that there would be lots that are four, that are more than four acres, which would be suitable for, for an IRD?
Well, and I, yes, and I would say the, the question to pose to you is, if you were to envision that the infill redevelopment PUD in its more streamlined manner was a general PUD, maybe that's no longer relevant ques, maybe, maybe that, maybe an acreage maximum is no longer necessary at all. It could apply equally to addressing flexibility in a smart way to development at the south end of the airport along Williston Road or in Meadowland Business Park as it could be to a one-acre parcel on Shelburne Road.
Yeah, I'm thinking of the development just north of the, of the fire department, which is probably a fairly large parcel, but all single level or two levels, I can't remember now. Should that be redeveloped for very, much more dense, much more densely developed, I think it's more than four acres.
Yeah, and, and I think.
We shouldn't shut them out.
I agree, wholeheartedly. And I think where we've, our evolution at the staff level has been, originally what, what Sharon was conceiving of was that an infill PUD would apply to small properties and then you'd reach a larger scale and you'd do a neighborhood commercial PUD. I think we're finding frankly and honestly that the neighborhood commercial PUD, while well-conceived, is very complex. And it's very directive that in the right set of circumstances, in a more greenfield environment, would be a really nice neighborhood. You know, mixed-use neighborhood. In reality, we have very, very few sites like that in South Burlington. And so in terms of return of effort of building that entire thing, you may be, in our view, the community may be better served to having a wider use of this infill that became a, a more general PUD coupled with these other great tools that you've developed over time. The inf, the, the, the urban design overlay district, the, the transportation work, the site plan standards, your environmental protection standard, and not adding another whole layer on top of it. And don't forget, you'll still have your master plan that you've recently just put forward so that somebody has to think of the whole. So I'm wholeheartedly agreeing with you, Michael, I think we can do a simpler answer.
Remove the four-acre limitation.
Yeah.
I was just going to say that, that is something that I, when I said that I adapted the purposes and language from the infill draft to a more generally applicable draft, that applicability section, the four acres was removed and the applicability is more specified based on zoning district instead of by parcel size.
So can, can I comment just on the first one that Michael said, though? Wouldn't that also not apply to this? Because he's talking about, what was your first comment? It was about focusing it on the.
Targets, target areas.
Target areas, but, but now we're not doing that because this has to work at Spear Meadow as well. So we're actually not talking about target meta, target areas in this, right?
It depends which direction you go. If you stay with the infill PUD and just focus on the infill PUD, then we would identify specific districts where it would apply. If you want to take the direction that we're sort of thinking right now and adapting the language that we've written for infill and make it more general, the way I've written it is that it would apply to existing approved PUDs as well. Outside of the specific areas where it's allowed.
Just to clarify, my, I think later on in the draft, my first question was answered because there's a suggestion that we might designate zoning districts where this would apply.
Yeah.
So my question about targeting was answered further down in the draft and that, that's why I made that comment. My other, I've got a, a bunch of them, but they all come in one bucket, which is the, the language, I feel the language limits the chance for designers and developers to, to innovate because we're always saying, it's a question of context that we, we need. And my reading of it is, we're going to do the same old thing again because we want it to look like the old one. I think we need to be much more, we need to be more innovative and more progressive about it. So that language, and it's in many places, that I, I noted it. You know, the, the prevalent pattern of land subdivision development areas defined by block things, da-da-da-da-da, rear side, you know, a lot of sit, a lot of conditions that apply now.
I, I, I think you've hit one of the things that we struggle with the most right on the head, Michael. I, we, we sort of had this, this interesting conversation of saying, how do we say the context of what's around it, when that context is good, should be mindful, but not when it's bad? So, for example, if you're on Shelburne Road and you're right up against the, the Orchard Neighborhood, being sensitive to the Orchard Neighborhood being next door to it and single-family homes that are not likely in the next 20 or 30 years to be completely be done should be considered in context so you don't have a six-story building casting a shadow over there then permanently. By the same token, you know, the auto tire repair shop is not context that should be the model that forces everybody downwards. So I think that's something we did wrestle with a little bit and, you know, a, and finally, by, by, as a third example, the Larkin Terrace Building, as, as, I think is a really, really nice building, other stuff around it should be paying attention to what pattern it has started to create, so.
Yeah, and they're doing.
We're totally open, we would love to get some feedback. We're going to do some additional research on, you know, how do we say, if it's good, put it, keep it in, consider its context, if it's not good, don't.
Good maybe okay for you and maybe not okay for Monica. You know, that's a value judgment that is very hard to come from.
Totally understand the problem.
But, no, talking about Larkin, they're building more behind the ones that are on Shelburne Road, if I understood correctly. Oh, they're building, they're building more apartments.
That would be part of the objective, yes.
Yes, and, and those could be one or two stories higher than the ones that are on the, on Shelburne Road. And.
Well, and meanwhile, I guess what's in my head is, as something goes in across the street on the other side of Shelburne Road, it would be nice to be responsive by a completely different developer to what's happening at that corner.
And, and Larkin was one of the respondents who said, when asked if you could build another level or two with, by using TDRs, would you do so? He said, absolutely, if I could comply with all the regulations. So, yeah, there's, there are lots of things in here that are interesting and good about taller buildings being set back behind the, behind the lower buildings or somewhere else in, in, positioned in the lot so that they don't overshadow, for example. Pattern, rhythm, so these, I don't want to prolong this meeting because we've, we've battled, battled this around a lot, but it's a general bucket about, I think we're losing opportunities for innovation.
Great feedback. How I see you leaning forward, are you, did you want to talk at all about the infill? Or do you want to wait till our next meeting when it's back? Or you look, you looked.
I was just wondering if you're done.
Uh, we'll never be done. But.
Done talking about infill. There's other stuff later on in your agenda.
Okay, yeah, I think we're nearing the end of infill.
Not going to make any recommendations to the city council then.
We, I believe, came to the discussion, to the conclusion that we as a group didn't have something in front of us. We felt comfortable forwarding right now, so we gave the, the three timeline.
Your problem, let them throw it out. That's why they're city council, anyway.
Okay, yes.
Of course, would have a lot of comments about the kinds of things I'm hearing. I'm not on the planning commission.
Very good, well, thank you very much.
Can you clarify what our next step is before we move on then? I'm, I'm still.
Okay, so we, we are going to readdress this at our next meeting.
Right, so what we would like to do with the commission's okay is, the infill PUD that you saw here, we are going to provide you with an updated draft that is a more general PUD that is, I would say, 75%, 80% the same thing as what you've seen, but has a wider applicability. Then, and, and I, the feedback that we've already gotten, I think we can already start to build that in. Michael's comments here about, you know, we, we, we don't want to be precluding innovation. We want to be giving direction and so not just to say, be innovative and not say what that means, but we, we want to give some, some guidance. From there, you can make a call about what things you want to ask other committees to work on and what do you want to do as your, as, as add-ins to this in the short term or the longer term? Like TDRs is specifically in my mind, that's on, that was part of tonight's agenda. We would love to, it doesn't have to be in this first round, but it could be, we see an opportunity for the use of TDRs in certain zoning districts tied in with this general PUD to create greater opportunity for more housing. There is a, in our view, artificial restriction on housing on Shelburne Road that you could.
Fix.
Fix and create new opportunities relatively simply.
What about Ch, what about Williston Road?
Also on parts of Williston Road, yeah. I was just trying to not say, in the middle of the Chamberlain neighborhood, which you had previously said, you know, we don't, we don't want to, it's an important project, but we're not trying to sort of say, let's put six-story buildings in the middle of the Chamberlain neighborhood.
So, but just so I understand, if, if we're trying to move with this, this PUD, can't these committee requests then not be connected to the PUD? Can't they instead be connected to a broader, like, specific ask about how do you keep Shelburne Road safe? How do you, what, maybe we just.
I think that was Bernie's recommendation is split out next, at your next meeting, those things that you need immediate responses on related to a PUD that you would want to finish in the next two months versus things that are important and relate to this, but are not dependent upon their, the action that you would take in the next two months.
And just, so I understand, something like requiring that parking goes in the rear, that wouldn't necessarily be in here because that necessarily, wouldn't necessarily apply to Spear Meadow. Like specifics, like that sounds like a Shelburne Road corridor comment, but not a.
You already have in your existing regulations, a requirement that other than for single and two-family homes, parking must be the side or rear. That's already in there.
Right, so why does it need to be, so why does it need to be here, I guess, is what I'm saying?
Because it's reiterating that, that a PUD doesn't get to just waive that feature.
Okay.
I mean, we, we still need to tweak.
But it's not saying one or two houses, right? It's just, I, I, that's what I would look for when, yeah.
We would also like at your next meeting, our recommendation is, as, as we were saying a few minutes ago, that you, we don't think that ultimately the NCD PUD type is necessary. There are a few side effects of some properties that you might have been thinking about that we would like to talk with you about how you could address those properties and have an equally good outcome. But in the next couple of meetings, we'd love to get the feedback of, do you agree that that full PUD type may not be needed? Because I think that will help set up our work plan. It's already 8:53, I don't want to encourage getting into that dialogue right this second, but that's, that's going to be our recommendation.
Having read.
So just along those lines briefly, though, Paul, before we throw that out completely.
Before we throw that out completely, um, you know, like with the infill PUD, you did a significant amount of trimming to make it more usable. So my only question back on the, um, neighborhood commercial would be, are there things we can do to tailor it where it could still be applicable? Cause I, I'm, and you know, this is not the answer tonight, but something to think about. But before I would throw it out completely, I would want to know, you know, what are the potential ramifications and unintended consequences? And are there things we can do to, um, tailor it to make it simpler where we kind of get what we want?
I don't know. Having read what staff presented, it seems that their justification is reasonable. I can only think of one, one property that would benefit from, uh, an NCD. But yeah, I can only think of one right now.
And I think that's, that's where we've sort of landed, Michael, is that we found one or two and putting the huge amount of effort into developing a, and fine tuning for one or two parcels. If we could achieve ninety, ninety-five percent of the, of what an NCD could do for one of those two properties, that feels like a much better use of a time when you have, as always, a massive list in a growing community of projects to work on.
So it seems like, um, we don't want to just throw out the NCD, but we want to follow up on a more detailed discussion. And maybe it makes sense, um, after we have a better feel for what this general PUD might accomplish and have a better feel for what that is, to be able to kind of think about them together.
That makes very much beautiful sense.
It would be helpful to see our old graphics as well for what we, all those designs we have for what an N, an NTD would look like versus to make sure that we're still working towards that. Cause I think that is what we still have in mind.
Yep.
Um, so we didn't do a lot with four B, but it sounds like we might be talking about some of those things, um, just in our upcoming discussions, like the TDRs and underlying zoning changes. Do we need to get into that tonight?
I think that if you are comfortable, the idea of this general PUD is very adaptable to include TDRs. Um, we see a tremendous opportunity for them and we think that that's something that I like to um, bring to you. You can talk about it at your next meeting about whether it is absolutely ready and you want to put it in this two-month version, or if you say it's good, we want to think about it a little bit more. We want to think about whether we, you know, the idea that, that Kelsey had of, you could value a TDR more for Shelburne Road. So it's even more enticing for somebody to want to buy one and move it to Shelburne Road than to somewhere else in, in, in the southeast quadrant. You may decide, you know, we want to think about this a little bit more so we can optimize it. That's a call that you can make. Um, we would like one way or the other. Um, we heard that the commission said addressing TDRs, making sure that there's a market for them is a top priority. We, we would like to get that done in this fiscal year with your one way.
Okay. Um, so, uh, Michael?
Yes, I was going to ask, propose, ask you whether we could jump to items seven and eight and then go home.
Um, so I wanted, I don't want to skip six without talking at least a tiny bit about it, if that's okay. Um, six, um, we did just say that we wanted to refine our asks for the committees at our next meeting. So I guess I'm wondering if, I mean, kind of almost what Michael said, if we hold off on making a specific ask from the Affordable Housing Committee until we have that bigger discussion at our next meeting. Okay, I'm seeing some nods. So yes, Michael, we will skip to seven. Um, so uh, the work plan, the unified work plan. So there are a bunch of great, great projects in there. It's not the first time we've seen the list. Does anyone have any, um, comments or questions about what's on here?
For the, on the budget?
The Unified Planning Work Program projects. So these are projects that we would be recommending go forward for funding.
So, yeah, I do. I only have one.
One what?
One question.
Okay, go for it.
That is on item two, a study of east-west transportation within the SEQ, which seems to have been done many times over and we could use that sixty thousand dollars uh, or, or seventy-two thousand dollars more usefully on, on other projects in, in my humble opinion. Cause we've got a lot of information, historical and current, on east-west transportation in the SEQ. Uh, we know where the new east-west connectors are, a couple on, um, through cider mill. And, uh, I, I just think it's, it's at this point, doing it now, maybe we have to do it in a year or two. But my view is that it's a waste of money right now.
So I have, oh, go ahead, Ted, sorry.
Go ahead.
I have that circled as well. And I was thinking that maybe that could be better, um, used for the eventual bridge that, you know, is going to connect Staples Plaza. Definitely think that would be much wiser use than the east-west. And I think that's, that really more is a local issue anyway. You know, it's the Chitham County Regional Planning Commission, as I've said before, they want cars to be able to get from point A to point B. And, uh, I think the planning commission is looking more at, um, what roads are going to do to neighborhoods. So I think it's a wasted study.
Do you, um, so are you recommending taking it completely off the list or moving it down in priority? Like to number five or something?
I would, I would take, I would, my recommendation is to take that money and put it into number three.
And, and, and move that project to another year, uh, you know, some other year, not this year when that money can be used, as Ted says, more usefully elsewhere.
Okay, sounds like two counselors.
Um, just, I guess, three things along that. Number one, I, if I recall, this is not the first time we've seen this. And I thought in a previous version, we agreed to put this on. Um, second, um, when we changed the Swift Street Extension, I thought we had a specific discussion about, um, doing this. Um, so for those two reasons, I would want to leave it on. Now, changing the priority and then moving it to a lower priority, I, I think is fine. But for those two reasons, I'd like to see it stay on. And then third, to, to Ted's point about the money for the, um, the bridge across eighty-nine, isn't, that's already on here, right, Paul?
Yep, that's a tough one.
So, um, I think that one's already covered. So, anyway, my recommendation would be to leave it on. I'm comfortable changing the priority.
Uh, my only comment was, um, that, again, we've been talking about safety.
That's where the money could go.
The money can go into evaluating safety. And I know that the Bike Ped Committee has a safety subcommittee. And I also learned, um, from Sue that the city made a strategic decision a few decades ago to turn off half of the streetlights for cost savings reasons and because people.
I, I do want to clarify, that didn't, if, if that took place, that changed immediately afterwards. So I just wanted, like, half the lights are not off in the city.
Okay, good. But if there are areas, I'd rather know that there's some budget available to the city to improve, um, lighting and safety. And, um, so I'm not sure where this would fit in. And it is a new concern of mine since we looked at this before. But if there's, um, a way to do that, I would appreciate that. Uh, Michael?
Yeah, no, I, I, I agree with Monica. I would much rather see this money spent on the three issues that Monica raised, which are lighting, safety and noise. And that the CCRPC could help us write the, the code to help us incorporate those factors into our future work. Not necessarily the work we're involved in right now, but, um, things change. I know this was, this was also mentioned in connection with twelve B, um, in addition to the two points that Bernie made. But, um, I think other things have become, have risen to greater importance. And those are the ones that, that Monica mentioned. So, I mean, do you need a motion?
Well, we'll need a motion on whatever package you decide to submit to council. Um, in terms of if you choose not to do it, um, that's perfectly fine. Um, the, uh, the match portion of it, uh, to the extent that it, it exists would be available for other planning consulting work. If you lower it in priority, I would say that given the event, the amount of funding that exists this year at the RPC, it's going to get funded whether it's ranked number two or number three. So I think that's, that's your own, you know, internal thing, but it won't change the, the application. So I would say if you're, if you want to do it, please proceed. You know, this was being responsive to a request that you'd made before. Um, certainly, you know, from the staff end, running both of these are, that, that's two big projects. Um, so that, that, that is, we would certainly prioritize from what we've heard from you and from the staff end, the Bike Ped Bridge as being the most important one to be doing analysis.
So just one brief follow-on question to, um, get at Michael and Monica's. You know, some work went into putting this together and costing it out and everything. If we were to, um, you know, eliminate the east-west study and think that we had now twelve thousand dollars of city money to spend on another study, is it even feasible that something could be written up, um, grant-wise to be put in here? And we probably wouldn't be able to address all three because they're pretty disparate. And usually these studies are focused on a particular area, like, you know, lighting at the intersection of XYZ on Shelburne Road. So, um, I just question the feasibility as to whether we could pull this out and whether staff would have time to adequately write a scope of work and proposal to be able to spend the money.
I think what we would do realistically is if you chose to not include this, we would, um, look to either use the funds directly or look for a future grant opportunity to match it, to do a project that you're looking for. We wouldn't try to shoehorn it in for, uh, council's deadline to, to vote on these is next week. So there's nothing wrong with providing a, a short list. You know, we, we try with the RPC to, uh, give them a manageable list and not to overpromise and underdeliver. So if you choose to have a relatively small list this year, there's nothing wrong with that. We are usually one of the higher asks in the entire county. So.
Yeah, so I, I would like to leave it in, but on the other hand, I don't have any problem if we pulled it out and then spent the money on a specific ask that, you know, Monica and Michael addressed either. So they're all good.
Oh, oh, Duncan, go ahead.
No, I was going to reiterate what Bernie said. I, I think when we eliminated the Spear Street connection, um, at least in my mind, you know, it was inherent that we were going to complete this by doing this study. Um, so I, I would not like to see it removed. Um, I'm okay if you move it down, especially in light of what all said of it still being funded, but I would not like to see it removed.
Yeah, I guess I could go either way with, um, if we say that, you know, we have made our work plan, which is pretty full for the year, and we said we were going to really focus on the redevelopment areas. Um, you know, I think if we were going to take it off the list, I'd want to say, let's circle back on this next year after we've gotten through some of these big priorities we've already made for this year. So I wouldn't want him to be lost.
To recycle it. And to Bernie's point, uh, I don't think we, when we, when the Swift Street Extension was removed, I think the commentary from here, from the council, from the commission was, okay, but we need to think about some, some kind of east-west connection that can handle a fair amount of traffic, if I remember your wording correct. It wasn't necessarily a study.
And I think this was meant to address that.
Yeah. And I think, you know, from my perspective, I don't want to change one of the other connections shown on the official map until we do some kind of study like this. So, you know, I think if the commission wanted to move forward with some other changes with the east-west connectors in the short term, then I'd want this done first. So if we took it off the list, I think I'd also want to wait on making any other changes.
Yeah, I, I'd agree with leaving it on the list. And we also talked about the idea of seeing, because it's being done with the region. Um, we talked about maybe seeing if Shelburne wanted to participate because maybe there's different cross uh, east-west connectors that are even outside of South Burlington. So if that, if those kind of conversations have already happened.
Uh, we did talk with the Regional Planning Commission about it. They have had some dialogues in Shelburne, I would say at this time. Other than, you know, participating on what the role of Cheese Factory might, road might be, I don't think that there's any interest in Shelburne of evaluating new east-west connections in their town.
Certainly bossed over.
Right. But they're not interested in looking at things further south than that at this time.
So Paul, then to, um, further address the need to study other things. Two questions. Number one, it's my understanding that, um, that we can get some in-kind CCRPC staff support, um, that might be able to help us if we define a specific thing we want to look at. And two, I know you've got tons of discretionary money in your budget to, to do things. But no, but seriously, you know, I think, you know, maybe, and maybe I'm wrong, but there might be a little bit of discretionary to be able to address some things. And so, you know, again, with respect to lighting or safety, you know, if Monica or Michael had a specific area that they wanted to look at, whether it be, you know, a stretch of Shelburne Road or a specific intersection or something like that, that we could, we could well define. I, I think maybe there might be an opportunity to address a very specific thing by another mechanism, possibly.
I would.
I was going to say Ted, but Paul, if you want to.
Because I, I highly would recommend lighting Kennedy Drive. There's a lot of people that walk along that. Be a beautiful avenue of sort of, of, of lights. Um, I think that's just crying out to have lighting. And it's really amazing that we don't have lighting.
It's an example. I mean, we could discuss that, you know, in a future meeting and come up with a specific, this is what we'd like to look at.
Maybe that will fit into next week's meeting when we're looking at the committee, what we're going to ask of the committee.
Well, I think at some point, like, i- it's, it's very valuable that the committees play a role. But at some point, you'll also want a professional analysis of some of these things. So I, I don't want to say, you know, committees can handle, committees can be wonderful policy, but they will need some support.
I'm just trying to make sure there's a gentle time.
Bernie, to your point, I would say that there are multiple pots in the city that we can look to, to do, um, different pieces of the puzzle. This grouping that's in here accounts for essentially all of the planning and zoning consulting um, line. And so if you wanted to create a little bit of room for, uh, for flexibility, then I think that that might be, you know, that, then you could remove that. I think our first draft that we gave you last week, last month, had the Bike Ped Bridge, uh, estimated a lower budget amount, the feedback that we got from the RPC, it was, if you want to hire consultants to do what you're actually saying you want to do, bump that budget to do it properly. Therefore, that, you know, consumed a higher match. So I would say in total, that's, this is essentially the planning and zoning budget.
Okay. Well, that answers my question. So, thank you.
Do you think if we removed the east-west study and then could use that, uh, and then could maybe add to the technical support and like add consulting
Yeah.
For the safety and lighting kind of under that technical support as potential topics we could use help with and then bump that.
And or others. You know, we have other consultants we can work with. This is only the RPC. We can, you know, we have a standing contract with Stan Tech and a couple of others, um, through Public Works that we could say, can you do an, an analysis?
Yeah. Cause it just seems like looking at our work plan and the things we've talked about, maybe it does make sense to hold off on the east-west discussion and have a little bit more, um, budget available.
I would say from the staff perspective, what you said, Jessica, of if, if you're not looking to make a change to the official map right now, then I don't know that you need to be analyzing it. I would say if you were thinking about making another substantial change to the official map of a planned roadway, given that you've removed Swift Street Extension, the next one really should have a transportation analysis to make sure that you're not, you know, creating a, a, a transportation problem for a future generation.
And that would be a good timing for comp plan, right? If we waited a year, or would it, would comp plan prefer that we have it now? I think comp plan.
You could do either one. You could do either one. I think that you, this spring, this summer, talking about all the needs that you're going to have for the comp plan and what you're going to want for data is going to be really important. This is one aspect of it, but energy, uh, natural resources, um, housing, climate change. There may be a lot of subject areas where you say, if we had $30,000 to do this, we'd want to do that. That's going to, we're going to tee that up with you this summer.
Okay, Michael?
Yeah, correct me if I'm wrong, Monica, but I think you're not looking for, or you weren't suggesting, uh, these, um, safety and lighting and noise standards for any specific stretch of road, but that they should be written up, uh, and written so that they can be included in all our LDRs. And that would be something that this money could be spent on.
It, there's two, because to, to answer, yeah, you're right. But in addition to that, there are some very clear specifics. Example, there's a state statute that enables local, local communities to put in 25 mile per hour speed limit and other safety measures around all schools, and South Burlington has zero. None of our school areas. That includes Shelburne Road, it includes corners of Kennedy. So, I mean, there are some things that with some help, we could ask someone to say, well, what exactly is that state statute? And what therefore can we recommend is implemented, and where does that money come from? So that's a specific.
You were commenting that it's missing, those factors are missing in the draft IRD.
That's right. So it's both, really. It's, it's overall policy, but then there's also, well, the state statute is a specific thing. There is a state statute that's very specific, and we should be able to tap into it. And we're not, so.
So.
Well, so I guess it sounds like, um, if, if we want to have some money to address those issues, then, you know, from this, it seems like maybe we need to take out the east-west transportation study to either, in this ask, add some money somewhat, like under the technical support, or just have that $12,000 in the planning budget to be able to use a, a different consultant to help us with something like that. Is that-
If you're to go down that path, I would suggest not increasing the technical support, because I think that's maxed out their capacity on that side of the house. That said, we can look to other consultants. There are mid-year adjustments with the RPC, um, where we could come in and say, hey, we've got the ability to do a match. You might come in six months' time and say, you know what, we'd really actually like to do the east-west studies. We can preview that kind of thing. The, the, the RPC can be fairly, I mean, they don't have infinite flexibility, but they have some flexibility to work with communities as they're, um, identifying their issues, especially leading up to a comp.
Okay, so we need a motion. Is that true?
You need a motion to submit whatever you want to submit to council.
Are we talking about deferring this to another year?
Well, you still need to submit the rest of them. So whatever things you'd like to submit to the RPC, you should, um, submit a motion to submit those things.
Well, I'll make a motion that we, um, will submit, submit the, uh, work program projects listed within this memo excluding number two, which we would remove.
I'll second. Okay, any discussion? So everybody understands that number two, we'd be not doing it this year. And like we just talked about, it would add that $12,000 back into the planning and zoning budget that we could potentially use on different things.
Understood.
Any other questions, discussion? Guys out there? Okay, all in favor? Aye? Do we need to do a roll call? Because some people aren't here.
I think you should, because you're probably going to have a bit of a split vote here.
Okay, um.
I just have one question. I'm sorry, I should have, is, okay, so what we're doing is we're not asking a cost estimate at $60,000, which presumably the Chittenden County Regional Planning Commission would cough up for the east-west. Why would we not ask for that exact same figure, 60, and then we're, we're out for 12 for a study of safety lights? I mean, anyone of the right mind who bicycles on Kennedy Drive at night to suicide mission. So I mean, there's a classic example. If you think, if they're interested in pedestrian safety and so on, so why wouldn't we use that for, see if they would come up with a certain amount of money to at least fund or areas that we deem are very unsafe for pedestrians and bicyclists at night?
Is that possible, Paul?
Then, don't worry about noise or, you know, in, just, just safety in street lighting.
Well, I'm thinking of safety in street lighting for pedestrians and cyclists along. I'm talking about Kennedy, but there's other, you know, probably White Street.
They have to be citywide.
Yeah.
Well, I, I think transportation things, planning costs a lot of money. For $60,000, I think you could do a review of a couple of streets. Lighting is a very, very complex issue. And so if you wanted to develop a citywide policy on lighting, you could do that. If you wanted to be looking at a street and what could be done, say, on Kennedy Drive, the opportunities for lighting, what's the scale, what's, what's appropriate? I think that that could be a discrete project. You could certainly ask for that. I think it is reasonably transportation-related because it's about pedestrian and bicycle transportation.
So I'd like to amend your motion that asks, uh, that that initial, you know, whatever the initial cost is, we'll say $60,000 and then local requirement to do a study of, um, Kennedy Drive.
Well, I, I would ask that it not be Kennedy specific, yeah, but that we determine, um, because I also know that there is the subcommittee at the Bike Ped that already has some ideas as well, most likely. So, but, but to earmark the money for a lighting study for safety, um, street lighting, um, safety review for specific areas that are yet to be determined.
Not with, not with specific reference to include Kennedy Drive.
I wouldn't, yeah.
That doesn't have to be.
That, it may be one of them, but there may be,
Yeah.
Obviously, they would need to know before they, you know, cost out what the project would be, but-
Do we need to type something to?
But you're saying we could also do that in six months. It's, I thought I heard you saying-
Know now, the, the more, the more that you can provide earlier, the better for the grant program.
Okay.
The, if, if you've got a specific request, um, certainly, you know, we can, we can work with the, uh, with the Bike Ped Subcommittee and see if they've got specific ideas. We have in the past done one that we said, location to be determined, and they've worked with this on it. I, I think having some level of understanding about what you're proposing to do will make it helpful. The more that it's vague, the easier it is for them to say. They also have to, you know, get approval from Federal Highway for the use of these funds. So if they can't draw a link of like, what's the transportation need here, then they're, they're not going to get funded.
Is it, is it not the transit overlay district really that we're talking about? Is that specific enough? It's broad, it's big.
Well, maybe we know, I mean, we know Kennedy is of need. We know other areas are in need. I'm not sure if, if there were a priority.
I think if you were to say a, one or, one or two streets, uh, in higher use areas that are underlit today, likely to include Kennedy Drive, that would probably be sufficient. And if we swap Kennedy Drive for city-owned section of Williston Road, that's not the end of the world. I think it's, it's got enough clarity as to what the purpose is. As opposed to, we're looking at the Queen City Park neighborhood, which is a very different thing, because it's not about large numbers of people and their movement.
So I'll amend my motion to say that we accept and recommend the Unified Planning Work Program projects with the exception of altering number two to instead be a transportation study of the high-traffic roads which are underlit now to do a safety review.
Is that enough for, great. Okay, then I will second with the amendment. Okay, any other discussion?
Yeah, so.
Ted?
What votes?
Yeah, I think we might need to do the roll call, because some of us aren't here. We're like split in location. Um, okay, so, uh, Ted?
Uh, yes.
Ted, is it? Um, Michael?
Yes.
Uh, Monica?
Yes.
Bernie?
No.
Um, Paul Engels?
Yes.
And Duncan? No, um, me, yes. So it passes. Very good. I think that was a good discussion.
Um, just as, i- if I do get asked the question, um, for those who chose to vote against it, my, is it a correct interpretation to say that you weren't necessarily against the other projects that are in here? It's just that you wanted to put the east-west as being in there. Is that an accurate representation?
So, two reasons. Number one, I wanted to keep the east-west in, but number two, um, I don't think what we're proposing to do is well enough to find, and I'm worried about the scope. So I think more thought would need to be put into that, and I don't think, um, you know, five minutes of wheel spinning cuts it, in my opinion, so.
Did you want to comment, Duncan?
No, I, I just, I, I felt like we should, we, we, when we eliminated Swift Street, I thought that the understanding was that we would go forward with the east-west committee, so, I mean, east-west study, so I, I kind of wanted to keep it in there for that reason. I'm not against studying safety by any means, but I didn't feel that we should be going back on what we said we would do.
And I think we-
Makes sense, um, okay. I just was going to say, I think we didn't, we, as, we did not disagree that we wouldn't be taking this back up, um, before comp plan, so that we do understand that. So it's, it's, we don't see it as something that we're not interested in at all. I think it's the priority or the timing for now.
More like a deferral.
Okay, very good. Um, meeting minutes. We have a whole ton of them.
I'll make a motion that we approve of the meeting minutes of August 18th, 2021, August 24th, 2021, August 31st, 2021, September 14th, 2021, September 23rd, 2021, September 28th, 2021, September 30th, 2021, October 26th, 2021, November 2nd, 2021, November 30th, 2021, and December 14th, 2021.
Second?
Okay, any discussion on the many minutes?
Uh, Partridge in a Pear Tree.
Nice work, everybody. That's a lot of meetings.
In case you're wondering why you felt a little tired at the end of last year.
Right?
Okay, any discussion on the minutes other than our hard work? Um, okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, and that was unanimous, so. Very good. Any other business? Okay, then we can adjourn. Very good. Thank you, and thank you for being flexible in the discussion tonight.
I was wondering on other-
Thank you, everyone.
You.
Take care.